Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board meeting tonight. Sorry we had such a delay, but we'll get things rolling right now. As a preliminary matter, as the Chair of the Auburn Planning Board, permit me to confirm that all members in person that anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, I will call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Wendy Steinhilbruch. Wendy? Ron Brooks. Nicholas Lynch. Steve Chambers. Todd Corain. And one more time, Wendy? Okay, moving along. Town officials and employees participating when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner, Adam Menard. Staff Assistant, Rachel Pressy. DDIS Director, Darlene Coyle. Honey Darlene stepped out. Good evening. The open meeting of the Town of Auburn Board of Planning Board of Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 is now called to order at 7:55 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020 due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website allows the public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only. Although some members of the Planning Board are physically located in the selectmen's meetings in Town Hall, those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/13374477. The remote access information has been posted on the town website identifying how the public may join. Please note, this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, we will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. First on the agenda tonight is the A&R for Eric Martner, 100 Prospect Street. Is the applicant present?
I'm representing the applicant, Kevin Marher, Two Stonebridge Road, Auburn, Massachusetts.
Kevin, this is Adam Menard. Can you repeat where you're representing?
I'm sorry?
Can you please repeat what you were saying? We lost you a little bit.
Oh, okay. Kevin Marher, Two Stonebridge Road, Auburn, Massachusetts, representing the developer, not the developer, property owner on this application for the A&R. Any questions?
Does anyone on the Board have any questions? Ron, do you have any questions?
No.
Nick, do you have any questions?
No, but I believe I do have to recuse myself of the motherfucker.
Okay. Steve Chambers?
No questions.
Todd Corain?
No questions.
And if Wendy, if you're there, do you have any questions? I guess Wendy's gone for the night. Does any member of the public have any questions regarding this A&R plan? Being none, may I have a motion to approve the subdivided lot as presented?
I'll make a motion, John, that we approve the A&R plan.
Do we have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor, Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nick Lynch? Oh, you recused yourself. Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
If myself was an "aye," it is a vote. Next on the meeting, is the public hearing. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for the applicant, Auburn Dermatology, requesting site plan approval?
I'll make that motion, Steve Chambers.
I'll second, John.
I am going to have to recuse myself, so Nick, you're going to have to take over for this one.
All right, thanks, Ron. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and just, we have permission to open the hearing already, so I'm going to go ahead and ask the Board members if they have any options at this time.
Nicholas, could you do a roll call vote for the open?
Yes, absolutely. Who do I have here from Auburn Dermatology?
Mr. Lynch, Steve Peichel, Burton Engineering, Southbridge, Mass. for the applicant, Lila, and Dan Viders.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it up.
Nick, it's time we'll need a vote to open the hearing.
All right, I'm going to take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion, Ronnie.
Oh, sorry.
Nick, we've opened by Steve Chambers already and seconded by, we just need a roll call vote.
Okay. I'm going to start with Steve.
Aye.
Wendy, are you there? Ron?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
And John Regan?
I'm staying here.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and ask the applicant to present.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch, Steve Peichel, Burton Engineering for the applicant. If you could please put up the most current site plan, sheet 2.13 on the screen, if we could, please.
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up now.
Thank you. If you could, who is ever operating the screen, could you please expand to open to full width so we could see everything?
This is about as far as it'll go on the screen.
You can slide it over there.
There's a little rectangle up on the top right-hand corner. It's a dash and then a rectangle and then an X. If you could push the little rectangle in the center.
You can slide it over the way.
Yeah, all the way to the, oh, there you go. Up more to the right, please. Okay, if I may, I'm just going to do an outline of what my summary will be this evening. I would point out in the beginning that these documents do not represent the most current documents before the town. I had addressed all of the comments with Graves' engineers, the 11 comments that we received in peer review. That is represented with these type of drawings, but the town engineer also, the town engineer of Auburn has also had four additional comments that I have addressed, but I will not be addressing in tonight's meeting for the reason that obviously the officials do not have an opportunity to just see my revisions, so I will just provide that as a caveat to the meeting at this point. But in terms of summary, this is what I'd like to do in a format. I'd like to summarize the site plans and then what I'll do is slowly and briefly go through the 11 comments that we did receive from Graves' engineering. And then what we could do is we could certainly entertain any questions from the audience and then at that point, we could decide what would be the best way forward to proceed with going through the next round of questions from the town. So, if I may, Mr. Lynch?
Yes, go ahead.
The Viders are proposing a 12-foot lot parking area almost adjacent to Hampson Street. What we have provided in terms of documentation for that is the following. We have provided plans, we have provided specifications and details, and we have also provided a drainage report which outlines the way that we would channel storm waters that would be created from adding impervious surfaces to the site. My assistant, I'm sorry, my engineer, Elio Cattori, is here with me tonight and he could also, if we would like, we could entertain questions from here, but what I will do is I will give a not-so-complicated and very brief presentation. The Viders are proposing that we have an additional or overflow parking in this back area adjacent to Hampton Street. Currently, because of the C-19 protocols that the business has to accept, unfortunately, we cannot certainly maximize the parking that we have in the existing lot, which has forced the Viders to shuttle their employees to a parking area down the street, which has provided an encumbrance to the business. So our proposal will, and again, I've been through most of the documentation with the town, but for the public as well, I just wanted to remind everyone here that the only function that this parking area will serve is for employee parking. It will not be accessible to the public, therefore we do not have any, let's say, restrictions or benefits of accessible parking here. The Viders have met the accessible requirements of the site at the lower parking area. They have met the requirements for the number of spaces and sizes and signage, so if there were any questions certainly about the accessibility of the site, we have provided for that in the existing parking area below. So we've already obviously done some clearing on the site and we brought some fill-in and what we are proposing to do is to add, this plan shows 10 spaces, but we have added another two spaces to the lot. On the, if you were looking at the lot straight away, you're looking at the very top left-hand corner of the site, we had added an additional two spaces. We have provided lighting and also storm drainage capacity for all of the storm water to be recharged back into the groundwater table and most of the low points on the parking area have catch spaces in them and those catch spaces will channel storm water to chambers that are beneath the parking area. We have provided also a means or an access for employees only to make their way from the parking area to the lower lot. Mostly those are a stone dust path with pretreated lumber stairs, site stairs that, because some of the site is actually pretty, it's, in order to access the parking areas, we have to provide stairs because it's pretty steep. So we have provided those stairs within the building code for risers and treads. We've also graded the property and made a clearing area to provide for the path from the lower lot to the upper lot. So with that, I believe, this is, one more thing, please. You're also showing in these plans, you're showing a gate as you access the property. It's the applicant's intention to not necessarily use a steel gate, but we will be providing two steel four-inch diameter bollards with a chain strung between them to prevent any access to the site from the public when the lot is not being used. It is also the applicant's intent to box this area and prevent any parking in the winter Their business is such where their clientele don't necessarily use the facility for four months out of the year, so there would not be a need to provide parking in this particular area, so we will close it for four months out of the years in the winter months and the lighting will not be on, but certainly in the other four, other nine months of the year, the lighting will be used. There is actually, if you were to go to the lighting page, which is page, you could go to 2.3, whoever's operating our presentation. One other thing, if I may, just in terms of summary for lighting, we've been very careful and thank you, if you could just expand that a little bit bigger so the audience could see this. We've provided fixtures and also lighting that will not spill into the adjacent site, but it's also our feeling that we provided enough wick candles on the site to provide to the standards and recommendations for the town. The town has reviewed the lighting plan and found that the intensities that we are providing are acceptable and also acceptable to the peer review engineer. So if I may, just briefly go through some of the more salient comments that we received from Graves' engineering. There were questions, for example, about the open space nature of the particular plan and what we are proposing. We've actually met and the peer review engineers agrees that we have met those percentages. We do not plan to provide so much parking in this area that we will provide too much impervious surface and then therefore create an issue with not only storm drainage from the site, but there will also be issues with maybe taking vegetation down that is unnecessary. The soil testing is also another question mark that has come up in terms of the engineering of the storm drainage system. We have, of course, brought additional fills onto the site and that being said, we would have to provide a soil data and also a percolation rate in order to justify the amount of chambers underground and underneath the parking area to provide for a clear and non-ponding scenario on hard drainage and paved areas. We have contracted a soil testing agency and within the week, they will be out there and they will be testing the soils for these percolation rates so we can, once we do receive the data for these test rates, we can provide that with the town, but we feel that we have an engineer and a drainage system that with the given or existing soils will meet the criteria that we're proposing within DEP levels. Also, some of the other things that stood out, one, for example, there was a question about the width of the site block that went from the proposed parking area to the existing parking area. That was indeed expanded from three feet to four feet. There was also some questions about compliance with building code. We have looked into this and we have provided information that says it is in keeping with 780 CMR within the building codes in terms of the amounts of and numbers of tread that go from one area to the next. There's a fairly steep difference between what is existing elevations at the parking area to the proposed parking area, so we plan to do that in such a way where the stairs that are proposed from the existing parking area are pretty much scaled simply and within the building codes of Massachusetts. And then the last thing I'd like to do and to address comments that were given by our peer review engineer, Graves' engineering, with the lighting levels and they have also reviewed the lighting plans and they are in agreement that the lighting levels that we have provided are within the town regulations for lighting levels within a parking area. So with that, what I'd like to do is just offer, my last part of this is really a sum up and that is, we have given all of the revisions for plans and comments for the first round of peer review. We also plan to address any comments that are certainly going to be coming from the second review and in that last section, we'll also provide the testing information for the soils to prove that our drainage rates from the site are acceptable and within state tolerances and guidelines. And then with that list, Mr. Lynch, I'd like to give it back to you.
Thank you. So I'm going to assume that we're, we're looking at pushing this to the next hearing as well, but why don't we first ask for a public comment? Thank you. Yep.
Are you going to go through Board members first, Nick?
Yeah, we can go through Board members first, Ron. Why don't we start off with you?
Okay. There's quite an elevation change from the top of Hampton Street down to where they're going to be parking and my question, did you say that some of it was steps out of wood and some of it was stone dust pathway?
Mr. Lynch, if I could address that question, Steve Peichel, Burton Engineering.
Go ahead.
What was the, the name of the person that was asking the question, please?
Ron Brooks.
Mr. Brooks, thank you for asking that question. It's a very good question. One of the things that we are very careful about, because there's about a 38-foot difference between what is proposed grades from the proposed parking area to the existing one, what we're, our plan is to do three significant site stairs that have a tread width of about a foot and have a riser height of no more than seven and a half inches. And as you come from the existing area, and if we could go back to sheet 2.1, if who's ever controlling the screen, I can demonstrate this.
I won't be able to see it because I can't.
I can explain it to you though, sir, and I will do that. Okay, so we have initially, we have 17 stairs that, thank you for bringing that up onto the screen. So the first set of stairs is 17 risers. You come up from the existing parking area and then there is a landing that is four-foot square that is level. And then what you do is you go up another 17 risers and you begin the stone dust path, which brings you to almost the middle of the path and there's another set of site stairs that only have three risers and then you have another length of stone dust path and then to the final stair, which is 15 risers. And those 15 risers actually go back to the stone dust path and then to the proposed parking area. So there's a series of steps and paths that we've provided for people coming from the office building to the upper lot in such a way where it's a comfortable way to go up the stairs and a comfortable walk through the woods. We're also proposing, and you don't have this on your drawing right now, but there will be lighted bollards at the transition point. So for example, when you come to a side stair, there'll be a bollard left and right and then when you go to the top of the stair, there will be a bollard left and right. So in the evening, as a person coming from the lower side to the upper side would be able to see the steps and they'd be well lit. So if that certainly is a concern, that's how we're going to address that.
So, can I answer your question here? It's, well, I've got a couple of other things. That's got to be a 10 to 12% grade, it seems like approximately, from the top elevation down to the other one and the, how are you going to keep those steps and that pathway clean in the wintertime of ice and smoke?
Very good question, sir, and thank you for asking it. Like I said initially, it is not the intent for the Viders to keep this area open during the winter months, so any of, let's say, the O and M thing, certainly the drainage system will be operational and all the functionality of, let's say, the parking area and how it drains will still be, you know, will be in operation, but during the winter months, we do not want to expose anyone to those certain elements and there will be no parking in that area.
Okay. And another question, Nick, can I keep going?
Yes, Ron, go ahead.
Is, did you check the soil at all when you, when they first began cutting the trees up there? Do you know what was underneath?
Clay. Was it clay? There was a former, no, there was no clay. There was a former engineer, I can provide this information to you, sir, if you were to give me your email address, I can mail it to you directly. There were a series of test kits that were done up here under another engineering firm about 12 years ago that was proposed and there was no evidence of clay in those boring samples.
You could just send that directly to Adam and he can get it to me.
Very good.
Thank you. I'm all set for now, Nick.
Thanks, Ron. All right. So Steve, do you have any questions?
I do. At the top, I believe you propose a four-inch asphalt berm. Is there anything to prevent vehicles from going down that grade where your snow storage is if they were to come in from Hampton Street and not stop?
The grades are such that, I don't know if you can see this or not, and my apologies for the small screen, but you'll actually only see, you'll actually only see one contour that is at the very, it's almost mid-space between spaces one and two. And that's, that number is 496 and then when you go from that contour, you go down two feet and that slope is on or about 2% and that is really what's recommended, not only by ASHTO, but it's also recommended by the town for grading within parked areas. So if, yeah, if there was a question about ice and snow, certainly we would certainly try to entertain that question, but seeing how there would be no vehicles parked and put in a condition where they could slide. slide during the summer months, we don't feel that that would be a design consideration.
Okay, so from, from the parking lot to the first stair, that's two, two feet, you said, or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's two feet and 20, so that's like one and 10. So that's, you know, just think about it in those terms, one foot and 10, it's a fairly small slope for a parked area. So, you know, we built up that soil pretty well, so it's fairly flat right now. And the proposed build out where it goes to that, it's gonna be fairly, you know, flat between 1 and 2%. But we certainly, we need to, you know, certainly drain water from it. So we have to have grades that, you know, would enable water to flow from all our pavement surfaces to the low points of the parking area.
Okay. And now has that whole lot been cleared or are there still trees outside the pathway?
There will be a minor amount of clearing and that's at the very, if you look at the snow storage areas, in those corners, we have to widen just a little bit. I've staked it out in the field last week and with my client. And we feel that, that where the tree line is currently, in terms of the parked area, it's, there's maybe one tree that may come down. And it's a very small diameter tree. It's no more than six inches.
Okay. And then on Hampton Street, you have the sidelines in order to access that and turn exit.
Yeah, it's, like I said, if you, once you, it's fairly good size opening for queuing and within this parked area. And again, there's only 10 or 12 spaces. So if people coming from the parked area and then going on to Hampton Street, the sidelines are fairly, fairly good in both directions. There is a small curve as you're turning out of the lot to the right. But certainly anyone's options, looking left and right, will have a fairly, a good sight view. We can certainly document that if that's necessary.
I don't know if it's necessary. I'd like to see it, but I don't know if it's necessary. So at this time, Nick, I'll reserve the rest of my questions for final review of the drawings as they've amended them.
Thank you, Steve. Don't leave your questions.
Yes, I do, thank you. Thank you for answering the vast majority of my questions in your presentation. Like with the chambers, I would actually like to see those, the side distance triangles coming out of the driveway onto Hampton Street. So if you can provide that, that'd be great. The only, one of the other questions I have, you mentioned that you will be installing lighting on the path, which is not shown on this, the documents we have. And you indicated it's just gonna be bollard mounted at the top and bottom of the stairs at each level. Have you looked at whether that's sufficient in the darker months for lighting the entire pathway? Or is your intention only to light the stairs?
Under the building code, typically we would follow that in terms of lighting levels that we would need. Certainly those are the important ones. We, again, we do not intend to have this open in the winter months. Just as it, as we start to come into fall, it will close. And that's when certainly we start to lose sight, or I'm sorry, sun on the site. So we don't feel that it's, it's a life safety issue at this point, but we would be willing to consider a smaller interval on the lighting along the path if it is the request of the planning board.
Okay. Yeah, I only ask because you said it's gonna be closed four, four months out of the year. I assume that's December, January, February, and March, this sort of the heavier snow. But as you know, you know, October, beginning of October, it starts getting darker earlier. And even the employees will be facing, blocking up this pathway in October or possibly early April under dark conditions. So if you don't mind looking at that, I'd appreciate it.
Sir, I, we could provide lighting levels if you, that is the wishes of the boards to see that.
Thank you. The, the other question I have is actually for the chair or for, or the town planner. I'm new to this, so my question is, since this is not directly connected to the existing parking lot down below, is this considered a new parking facility or is this considered just an addition to the existing parking facility?
I'll refer to Adam on that.
Thanks, Nick. It was, the applications asked it to be considered as an addition, not a new lot. Honestly, that has not been considered by myself or the building commissioner. I can discuss it with the building commissioner tomorrow. I didn't have a chance to see him before this meeting to ask that question. We can discuss whether it be newer, a completely new one or an addition.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'll reserve the rest of my questions. Thank you.
I'm gonna give Wendy another shot.
I have four more things.
Go ahead, Ron. Go ahead, Ron.
I was talking to a gentleman at Burton Engineering. Are you currently parking there or, 'cause I went by one day and I think I saw three or four cars there.
Um, as I. Yes, that is correct. We have requested from the town, the building commissioner's office, that we could have four temporary parking areas as they are currently. The building department has granted those four spaces and we can provide documentation if that is so required.
Well, and the last question is, when you talk about snow storage, you're talking about you're gonna store the snow from the bottom lot off Selkirk Street and the upper lot off Hampton in the winter.
No, no, sir, my apologies. The intention is still to keep the lot clear of snow. We will not be using the lot. And that snow storage is for the lot that is being proposed. Is that clear?
Yes. Thank you.
Do any other planning board members have any questions at this time? All right, so I just, I'm gonna ask a couple of quick questions that I had written down. The first one being, and you may, and I apologize if you answered this already, but what is the latest an employee would be accessing the lot during the period of time where the lot is open, excluding those months where you close it during winter?
I'm sorry, did you say the frequency? I guess I misunderstood you.
What is the latest somebody would be accessing the lot and the earliest they would be accessing the lot?
As I understand it, the applicant intends to keep the lot open till 5:00 p.m.
And what's the earliest that they would open the lot?
And again, 8:00 a.m.
Okay. All right, and you, and I think you did address, it's one of the comments here, which was related to the sidewalk and stairs being proposed with three feet wide, which is more narrow. And you seem to address that, that you would consider the four-foot wide sidewalk and stairs.
Yes, Mr. Lynch, and I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, but, yes, we, in this latest revisions that we have sent to planning, we have went from a three-foot wide block to four. And that is also, the stairs are currently being proposed as four as well, four-foot in width.
Elio is speaking here. If you open up the third attachment, you'll see the updated plans. They're not the plans from today, but they're the plans from last week.
This is, this is the plan that I brought to the moment. I'll see if the other ones weren't uploaded yet. But they were, they were, I can confirm they were changed.
It's the third attachment, the 1007, if you look there, 2020 1007, 20M 156. Same plans. You can see the updated layout and the four-foot block. If you scroll up, it's the third attachment from the top. Yeah. So those are the site details you have to just scroll up. Yeah, use your scroll bar. There you go, that's existing, go back one. There you go. It's still, the, you need to open up the attachment from the Auburn MA, what's that, where you have all of the agenda and. Yeah, go, sir. Yep. I didn't want to cut off the members earlier.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Elio. All right, thank you. So without any more questions, I'm assuming we're gonna ask for a motion to close the public hearing or to extend the party's campaign to the next meeting on the 27th?
Is there any public comment?
Yeah, that was a good question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Kimberly Moran and I am a resident of the Forest Park condo neighborhood that is directly across the street from the proposed parking lot. And I think that the condo community here has some concerns about traffic using the Forest Park property as a cut through. We currently have this problem with Grove Medical where people cut through Forest Park from Packer Chubb Street through Forest Park and into Grove Medical. We are private property and we are having a great difficulty keeping public traffic out of Forest Park. We've had a couple instances where people have almost gotten hit because we don't have sidewalks. And if we add another business parking lot, even if it's only employees or parking 12 cars coming through, how does the town plan to deter public traffic coming through Forest Park?
I'm sorry, Kimberly, is that a question to the applicant or is it a question to the town?
Whoever wants to take it. We've been trying to have an agreement with the town to put up two posts and a chain block the Hampton Street exit and entrance into Forest Park and we've been denied. We're responsible for plowing our own street and paving our own street at our own expense without town subsidy. And any increased traffic is going to increase the wear and tear on our property and the safety of our residents and the children living here. So before another business parking lot is put in, we need some assistance on what to do to stop public traffic from coming through here as a cut through.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer that question if I may.
Go ahead.
The word of Ms. Fran, is that your last name or I'm sorry, Kimberly?
Yep, yep.
Kimberly, I believe the applicant would certainly be willing to put up a sign that says private parking if that would help your cause.
We already have that.
I'll say again. You do.
Yeah, we have, we have signage.
I don't know what else we certainly could do.
We have signage on our property that says it's private property and no through traffic is allowed. We've installed speed bumps. Nothing has worked. And we either need the town to cooperate and let us close that entrance or come up with some other solution to stop through traffic before another public parking lot is put in.
Right, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Kimberly, this is an, this is an enforcement issue that certainly I'm sure that the town would be willing to address. However, I don't believe that the applicant could, could even if they wanted to address this particular issue.
Ms. Moran, now this is Nick Lynch, the vice chair, too. I think that while your, your concerns are definitely valid, I think that is something that would have to be taken up with local town safety, more or less.
We've gone up, we've taken it to the fire department, the police department, and we've asked the town manager to come and talk to us and we've gotten nowhere. And now we are looking at another parking lot being put in in a residential community where everyone's cutting through our lot and there's a lot of concern with the neighbors here.
Right, no, I understand. I understand, I understand what you're saying. I understand the concern. Obviously, I, you know, that's something that we have to consider before any approval is done, given that it is a safety concern brought to us by an abutter. I definitely respect that. And I do think it's something that we can even ask for, you know, with regards. So I know that you have the speed bumps that are put in there to slow traffic from the cut through. And being very familiar with that area, you know, I reckon I drive up that street multiple times a day picking up my kids from other daycare or school. So I'm very aware that that's used as a cut through to and the concerns. But I do think that's something that we could ask, you know, whether it was, you know, police or the town itself to comment on what additional impact that may have. So that at least we're aware before any board decision is made.
All right, so the police and the fire chief have both told us that if we put a gate or a chain up at the Hampton Street exit, we're preventing emergency vehicles from cutting through Forest Park. So we've already gone down that road. We literally are just getting the door shut in our face at every turn and now we're looking at more traffic coming through. And I know that they're saying that only four cars are allowed to be parking in that lot right now, but that's not accurate. That lot is full almost every single day.
Respectfully.
And they're cutting through Forest Park to get there.
Respectfully, I do think that we're gonna have to ask for a public comment from specifically police and fire to have that same, exactly what you've outlined there, so that we know that there isn't an option additionally on that. I trust you what you're saying, if that's accurate. But I do think that's a point that we ought to make a comment, okay?
Okay, that sounds great.
Nick.
Go ahead, Ron.
I just heard Mrs. Moran say that the lot is full every day. Are you talking about the lot? You're talking about the lot at Grove Medical?
No, I'm talking about the new lot that's not paved yet, that's right across from our dumpsters. That lot is being full. Oh, it's full every day. And there are signs there that say it's private property and no one else should park there, but that's not true. People sit in their car, teenagers come and sit in their car and hang out up there. There, there, it's, it's an area that's surrounded by trees except for looking in it from the Forest Park side, so it's nice and private. So a lot of the high school kids go up there and smoke and hang out in their cars. And I suspect that the dermatology center has had issues because they did recently put up signs that says it's private property and no one else is supposed to use it, but it's being used all the time and it's full.
Right, because the presenters of the applicant said that the town has only granted them four temporary spaces till it's all built.
Yeah, that's not happening. I can tell you that already. They're using it as a pass fee right now.
So Ms. Moran, your, your comments are valid. I understand that, that part of it. I do think that it's important that concerns you have of others outside of employees who may be parking there temporarily, that sort of thing, that's broken up, that'd be brought to the attention of whether it was law enforcement or what have you. I don't think that's necessarily a point that this board can take up right now. But I do think that it's, it's important for us to look into what other options, maybe make it accessible in another manner for only employees there, whether it was some type of, you know, card access or gated lot that was only the, only the access one way by employees who actually work there. I think that's a thought or something that we could even consider that would kind of count, that would change some of those concerns and maybe even offer a solution that would the applicant could certainly consider.
Yeah, I mean, I think for Forest Park, our concern is more using us as a cut through and less over who's parking in that lot. I think if we don't, if no one's cutting through Forest Park, have at it, anybody can park in there. But we've got issues with safety for the residents in Forest Park where it's private property and we're being used as through traffic. So I was told to join this meeting and bring my concerns here. And if there's somewhere else I should go or the board should go, I would love to know where to do that. Because we've been told to go to the police chief, we've been told to go to the fire chief, we've been told to go to the town manager, and all those avenues have proved fruitless.
Sure. So just more of a suggestion too, and this is not for myself, another one of the planning board members did mention, is it possible to have, or have you guys spoken at all to public safety, whether it's police or fire, about possibly having gated access that could be used or was that still shut down due to the fact that it was a concern for fire and emergency vehicles?
The board at Forest Park has spoken to the police chief and I believe the, I'm sorry, the fire chief and I believe also the police chief. And we were told we were not allowed to put a gate up.
Okay.
So that's why if, if we're not allowed to put a gate up to protect our own residents, we have, we take issue with another public parking lot being put in.
Certainly, I understand that. And I think that you've, you've made that point too. Um, and I think that you've, you've, you've made that point, too, so I think it's gonna be under advisement, and something that we'll consider before that vote is actually made. Okay?
Okay. So what would my next steps be? Do I turn the next meeting, or will someone follow up with the, with the board, or?
Well, there will be another public hearing, um, on this, on, Adam, I believe it's the 27th, correct?
Um, that's to be determined. Town, uh, town meeting is on the 27th, so we may have, we could, we'll have to reconsider that, that particular date.
Okay. So, so that would be my first, my first thought would be to have, to direct you towards the next, uh, the next meeting, and maybe we can even ask the applicant, um, if they have any, um, uh, any suggestions that may either, you know, I mean, obviously, you can get, trying to limit access through it, so maybe if there's something where they can communicate to their employees about not accessing, because I think that's really what you're referring to, is the employees that would access this lot would then be coming through Forest Park. Um, so some type of understanding from the employees that work there not to be accessing through Forest Park, so more so for Hampton Street.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Okay. All right, so I'm gonna ask if we have any further public comment? Okay. Can I make a motion to continue the hearing?
Hello, this is, this is Dr. Byders himself, from, to, on, to, on, to, on, to, on, to the, on, to, 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 on, to,[764.12]
Pretty much all just a flat lot. So, we have like a storage container in the back. So, I mean, it's pretty open there when you go to, if you, I don't know if you've seen it, but you could, uh, it's just pretty much a big parking lot. So, this, this addition is going pretty much inside of the parking lot in the back. And there is some lawn, but it's right side and this, this on the left side. It's a huge hundred fifty by three hundred foot parking lot back there.
So, the, the basement level will be essentially the same level as, as the existing parking space back there, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, Nick, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Ron, do you have any more questions?
No.
Steve, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, how many employees do you have on site and, um, what's your typical, um, customer base look like? Do you, um, have people there in and out all day?
Um, there's, we have four employees, um, but one or two of them are generally out to sites, they're project managers. And we have an office manager and a, um, project coordinator and then I'm there. Um, and as far as people coming in and out, it's, it's pretty quiet. Like, we'll have our subs come in and out occasionally, mostly at the end of the weeks, obviously. And then, uh, we do have some customers that do come in once in a while because we have a tree now. Um, and then we have a conference room for if we have any meetings with any new customers or clients, but it's, it's actually pretty quiet in the office days.
Okay, so, I guess my, my concern would be if you're having that addition without adding additional parking spots, do you meet the square footage, um, parking for that as well as?
We will have, I think we'll have about ten spots, but we also have that whole lot there, like I said, parking lot. Um, it's, it's got actually, um, road grindings on it, so we don't get any grass around and grows through it. It's, it's pretty big, so if we needed a little pocket, it's, it's very simple on that backside of the building. Um, in the front, we had paved the section that, that's where the, I thought, and then we, uh, off.
Dennis, you're, Dennis, you're breaking up. Dennis, you're breaking up. It's hard, it's hard to hear you.
All right, can you hear me?
Can now.
Sorry about that. So, it's okay. It's five parking spots above and then there's five parking spots below, but we do a lot after all the little pocket if we ever needed it.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm with questions, John, thank you.
I would just add that there's probably only three or four cars parked there on an average day.
With the addition, it actually mathematically comes out to an addition of three point five parking spaces, so he has plenty of room in the back for that. Uh, Todd, do you have any questions?
I, no, I do not.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for any public comment. There being none, may I have a motion to approve as?
Close.
Let me, could I have a motion to close the hearing?
John, I'll make the motion, it's Ronnie, to, uh, close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, I'll second.
All those in favor? Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to approve the plan as presented to the planning board?
This is Nick Lynch, I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion, John.
All those in favor? Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye, it is a vote. Good luck with your new addition.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Next on the agenda is citizen, citizen petition to amend the Auburn zoning map, eight and ten Maple Street, assessors map sixty, parcels seventy-nine and ninety-six, currently zoned residence A, bracketed RA to highway business HB. They have a motion to open the public hearing.
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
This is Nick Lynch, I'll second that.
All those in favor? Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. It is now open. Is there anyone from the, uh, representing the citizen position for, for the Auburn zoning? I believe that would be you, Todd Broder, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Attorney Todd Broder, on behalf of Powell Family Realty Holdings LLC. Um, you'll know them as a family that owns and operates Crystal Caves, uh, Mini Golf and Entertainment Center. Uh, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, we're on the agenda because we filed a citizen's petition for a zoning change to, to parcels of land. And, uh, tonight, your, your board has a chance for review and comments and making a recommendation to town meeting. So, I wanted to provide you with a little bit of background and information and, and whatever, answer any questions that, that you may have as, as we go forward here. Um, eight and ten Maple are two currently residentially zoned parcels, which, um, sometime between the last, um, seven or eight years, uh, there were, there were residents, residential houses on those two pieces of property, which were in very poor condition and were, um, demolished, uh, during that time. And the, the land has sat vacant for, for quite some time. So, the, the proposal here is to extend over the highway business zone, which incorporates the land of up and down Southbridge Street and, and Washington Street for that matter, uh, extends that zone over to incorporate both eight and ten, uh, into that highway business zone. The, the Powell family would like to establish a small, uh, restaurant facility on that, on that area, which would supplement, uh, the existing family entertainment center. Um, the Powells have a son who is interested in, uh, potentially a barbecue joint, which I thought would be pretty interesting. Uh, so, just to, just to kind of further frame the issue, as you can see on this colored up plan, the area in white is the area that is currently zoned, um, residential, the, the last one was, yeah, that's probably better. The pink is highway business, the white is the residential A and the, the, I guess, yellow color is another residential zone, um, I think it's residency. But up and down, you know, Southbridge Street, you have that highway business area. Now, this, these two parcels are right at where Southbridge Street, you, you go right past Crystal Caves and immediately on your right is a street that heads diagonal up and that is, that is Maple Street. As you go left, then you get into the intersection of twelve and twenty. Um, there is an additional parcel, which, which, um, is a little piece of triangle on, it's between Maple Street and Southbridge Street, which is also owned by the same, uh, real estate entity and it's also highway business zone. I don't think that that is, um, developable at all, um, but it's there and, and could be utilized to, to buffer or whatnot from that, from this, uh, this site. But what we're really trying to do is rezone the parcel so that a restaurant use would be, a use that would be subject to site, uh, site plan approval. Right now, it wouldn't be allowed use at all in that zoning district, so, uh, the plans for, you know, such a restaurant would be, uh, in the future. Uh, this is a, a, this is the first step in the process of just getting the property rezoned so that the use would be available. Um, eight Maple Street is point eight seven three acres and ten Maple Street is point six three five acres, so combined a total acreage of about one point five acres. Um, not a huge parcel, so this isn't gonna support, you know, a massive restaurant operation, but that's not the intention. Um, so, uh, you know, it, we do feel like we would be able to fit an appropriately sized building with parking facility and probably a, a lot of outdoor seating. Um, so, again, the, you know, the, the Powell family's been in, in Auburn and in business for over twenty-five years at the Crystal Caves, uh, facility. And, um, you know, this is a, a, an addition to that campus in a way. So, I, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's really all that I have for the formal presentation.
Do you have any questions from the board? I'll start off, I started at the top of the list. Nick, do you have any questions?
Um, I guess more just, uh, not necessarily for the applicant, but, um, Adam, maybe you can answer this. What we're really just being asked to do is to support, uh, this particular petition, correct?
Yeah, basically, you're looking to, to, to eventually follow whether to recommend, um, town meeting approve the article or not approve the article. Um, town meeting, we're just gonna be taking this up regardless of the decision tonight.
Right, that's what, that's what I, this way. I, I guess my, my main question would be, is this really something that is, um, uh, the, the purpose of this board, um, particularly, while I do, you know, a hundred percent think it's, you know, good use for the space, that sort of thing, um, I just always thought this was kind of deemed spot zoning, um, and I wasn't sure if that was the case or, uh, or if it, that this was a particular board that should be making that kind of, um, uh, vote of support or not.
Uh, to the chair, I can, I can try to, try to answer that. Um, I don't think in this case there'd be spot zoning since, um, it would have bought the highway business zone that's already there, so it wouldn't be having a random, you know, highway business zone in the middle of residential, it's already bordering highway business. Um, as to whether the planning board should take this up, yes, this is one of the planning board's duties is, um, considering the legislative changes, they, they regulate the zoning by law, um, along with the zoning by Board of Appeals, um, together, it's your regulatory duty to kind of view these kinds of things.
Okay, thank you, Adam.
Welcome.
You all set, Nick?
I'm all set, yep.
Ron, do you have any questions?
Yes, I just wanna say, John, and to the board, that I am adamantly opposed to change this zone. I don't know why we would do it to facilitate someone just to build a restaurant that they want. When they bought the property, they knew it was residential and that it was not highway business, okay? And they talked in the letter that was sent to the selectmen about it being matching the zone. Well, it matches, right next, the next property over is a residential neighborhood, there's several houses on, uh, in an apartment complex on Maple Avenue. The last thing they need, I would say, those residents is having an outdoor seating or a restaurant there and more traffic and another curb cut on Southbridge Street, or even if it didn't come in off Southbridge and came through their existing parcel. I don't think we should be, uh, agreeing or recommending a zoning change for, to facilitate one party to build a restaurant or anything else. It is not highway business. Highway business is, is on the rest of Southbridge Street and Washington Street. Other than the road being diagonal, it's the same thing as saying, oh, well, right up to Warren Road and Waterman Road, it's all highway business, so why don't we just go down and make it highways, the first two houses, somebody buys them, takes them out, how they wanna put businesses. I am adamantly opposed and would not recommend it under any circumstance.
Do you have anything else, Ron?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Steve, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, if this were to get approved, is the existing building coming down, um, immediately or?
Already gone.
You know, you said.
Um, I can, I can answer that. They, they're, the buildings that were on those lots were, were demolished, best I can tell, maybe seven or eight years ago by Google Maps and, and, um, yeah, they were, they were in really rough shape.
Okay, thank you.
Todd, do you have any questions?
Um, yeah, I, I, if you don't have an answer for this, I understand. If this is not approved, is, are there any plans for the parcel that, that the current owners have, are they gonna sell it, are they gonna try to develop it residential or?
Um, uh, no, this is, this has been sort of a, a long-term plan for, for them, uh, in, in their minds anyway, in terms of a master plan. Um, once the opportunity came about, I, you know, I think it looked tight, it, it's a tough area to develop residentially because it is busy. Um, it, it's, you know, it, it, one of the parcels has frontage on Southbridge Street, so it's not as if it's, um, you know, completely outside the business zone and it's very busy right there, it's just not a desirable residential, uh, lot. So, I, I, and I understand Mr. Brooks' concern and, and that is certainly something that the petitioner is aware of and would be cognizant of in terms of, you know, offering, buffering and, and the like. And I don't think that you'll find this to be, uh, a heavy use, a, a drive-through and that sort of use would not be allowed on this site under any circumstance. This would be a real kind of stand, you know, standing restaurant with, with some parking. Um, so, but no, there are no other plans to develop.
Just one other question, um, if this is approved and, and you, before you can actually construct the restaurant, you'd have to come back to this board and go through the whole site plan review?
That's correct.
Where we get issues such as traffic and, and, uh, neighborhood concerns, et cetera, is that correct?
That's correct. The, the request, you know, the reason why we, we chose to go with the rezoning was, uh, to understand if, if the town would be supportive of, of changing the, the zoning so that those types of uses would be permissible, but only under site plan approval. Uh, so, yes, the planning board would be reviewing this in detail as you do all your other applications for, for any kind of, uh, new uses.
Okay, thank you, I'm all set.
I have, I have a few, uh, questions or comments, Todd, as I'm, I'm sure you well know I would have. My biggest concern here is, is kind of like Ronnie's, but if we, if this is rezoned to business, we don't know where the curb, curb cut would be, we don't know if it would be on Maple Street or on Southbridge Street. So, in order to make that a safe passing, you'd have to make Maple Street a one-way street in the southbound direction. Otherwise, you're gonna have people coming out of the parking lot, taking a left on Maple and trying to take a right on Southbridge Street. You're just begging for an accident. And I appreciate your comment about saying there wouldn't be a drive-through allowed, but there's nothing there to prevent these, these owners now from selling this down the road in five years, then the next person comes in and buys it, it's already zoned business and they're gonna wanna put a drive-through through. So, those are my concerns, so I'm, I'm not for it myself.
I, I, just taking a look at the, the zoning bylaw and the table of uses, um, I, I am fairly certain, I did look at this, that a drive-through would not be permissible on, in this, in this area, but I, I, I could be, I could be mistaken, but I will tell you to address the, the, the traffic and/or a traffic pattern concern, there, there is a triangular piece of, of land that sits between Maple Street and Southbridge Street, I'm not even sure it has a number. Uh, it's, it's point two-two acres and it's the triangle that extends down and there's a stop sign, uh, right there. You, you know, there would have to be certainly a lot of consideration given to where a curb cut may be and how this land i- is utilized and how intensively it's utilized and how the traffic impacts, uh, would work. Certainly would agree that, you know, you'd be talking about a restriction, you know, no right-hand turn out of this, out of this, um, facility down, down Maple Street, you know, you'd want everybody going back out to Southbridge Street.
Yeah, but then we gotta try to make a right on Southbridge Street, you gotta create an actual.
You know, would we want to round out that corner, which is, uh, you know, owned by the same property owner in order to make a safer transition, a, a right onto Southbridge Street? I think a right is lawful at this point and it's probably, it probably could be made safer with some accommodations on this, on that triangular piece of land, so, you know, there may be a chance to improve that intersection in a macro sense, never mind, um, for purposes of this potential restaurant.
So, who owns, do you know who owns the triangular piece and the piece right to the west of it, Todd?
My client owns that piece, the triangular piece that I'm, that I'm referring to.
Yep. And what about the one next to it?
Further on, it's, it's, that's the Galaxy Development, KFC and, um, that, that facility.
So, you would actually probably have to wipe out that triangle, cut off Maple Street and come, if you came down Southbridge Street, you'd have to make a right and then go to the left to get down Maple Street and come out so you could have access to the right or to the left on Southbridge Street, 'cause the way it is now, you're saying you can't make a right-hand turn on Maple Street to prevent traffic going by what residential homes there are up there, I mean, there's a row of condos up there and everything, but if you come down Maple Street to the east, heading towards Southbridge Street and try to make a right, someone's gonna get killed. I guarantee it.
We, I, I certainly recognize the, the need to, to look at that pretty carefully and the, the positive here being the fact that the same property owner controls that triangular piece there and, you know, would obviously be, it would be in their best interest to keep that area as safe as possible and to make whatever improvements make sense. And that would be certainly something that I would expect to be talking about if, you know, if town meeting approved this zoning change. You know, that is certainly an issue that would be top of mind as we went into site plan approval.
Right, but if, if, if the owner wants to transform that triangular piece, whatever, he can pretty much do what he wants on the Maple Street side and the Southbridge Street side, he has to deal with the state, that's a state highway, Route twelve, so he can't just go in and do whatever he wants.
I understand.
So, those are my concerns. Is there any public comment?
John, I have something else.
Okay, Ron, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I think is Wendy's the only one that's absent tonight?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I would think out of, uh, courtesy that we would wait on something so serious to, uh, to vote on it until she's, uh, hopefully at the next meeting.
Uh, to, to the chair, this is the only opportunity for the board to make an recommendation.
Prior to town meeting.
So, Adam, do, do we have to take an action on it?
You can approve or you can, or not approve?
Correct, I, I.
Or recommend or not recommend, I should say, we don't have the ability.
It's recommend, right?
I think you'd have to click and stance one way or the other.
Okay, well, so I understand that, um, the voters are gonna have their say, um, and my stance on this is if they're looking to increase their taxes on the property and then have to come back and potential development or site plan approval, um, I think it's, um, something we should consider if they wanna pay more taxes on that lot until something else is developed.
John, are you open to a motion?
Uh, I'm, didn't get a chance to see if there's any public comment, Ron.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the public that would make, like to make a comment on this application or petition? There being none. I'm gonna ask for a motion for a vote and when I call your name, you'll e-
John?
Yes.
Ronnie Brooks, I'll make a motion that we, uh, send a not favorable, uh, recommendation to the town meeting.
This is the way I'm gonna make the roll call, Ron. Once I get the motion for a vote, I will call each of your names, you'll either give me a yea or a nay. And the, wherever the numbers fall will be the recommendation or the non-recommendation. Everybody understand?
Yea in favor, yea in favor, nay in not in favor.
In favor or not in favor, either way. So, could I have a motion to take a vote?
John, this is Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second, please?
This is Nick Lynch, I'll be the second.
Hey, Nick, do you recommend or not recommend this to be, uh, this zoning bylaw change for this, uh, these two parcels?
I don't recommend.
Ron Brooks, recommend or not recommend?
I don't recommend.
Steve Chambers, recommend or not recommend?
I do recommend.
Todd Corain, recommend or not recommend?
I do recommend.
I, John Regan, is a not recommend. The vote is three to two and not recommending.
Okay, thanks everybody for your time.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Um, should make a motion to close the public hearing?
Already did.
After the fact. Did we close the hearing?
I closed the hearing, I guess.
Never mind that.
I did, Rachel, didn't I?
No, you did not close the public hearing. You opened it, you didn't close it.
Okay, may I have a?
John, Ronnie Brooks, I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
May I have a second?
This is Nick Lynch, I'll second that.
Hey, do we have to go and do the vote again, Rachel?
Yes, please.
Okay. May I have a, now that the hearing is closed, may I have a motion for a vote?
Steve Chambers, I'll make a motion for vote.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we did the motion to vote, we did not do the motion to close, so I have the roll call vote for the motion to vote. I just need the roll call vote for the motion to close.
Okay. May I have a motion to close the hearing?
We did that, Steve, um, was first and I was second.
Okay. I'm gonna call roll, roll call for a vote. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
John, I need the roll call to close only.
This is what it's for. This is the roll call to close the hearing. Nick made the motion, or Steve made the motion to close the hearing, Nick made the second to close the hearing. Now I'm calling for a vote to close the hearing, correct?
Yes, please.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. The, the public hearing is now closed. Next on the agenda is applicant Gary and Sheila Conroy request for a site plan approval with waivers under three point two point three point five of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a World War II monument to be constructed on the property located at five sixteen Southbridge Street, assessors map forty-eight, parcel one forty-three. Is there anyone representing Gary, Gary and Sheila Conroy here?
Yeah, I think we're, yeah, uh, Gary, it says Donna, that's my wife's computer, and Sheila's my sister over to the other side.
Okay. Uh, could you give us an overall view?
Yeah, I'll give you, well, we're trying, you know, we, we've, uh, you know, our history in Auburn dates back eighteen fifties and, um, we've got a small parcel of land across the street from the Auburn, um, war, World Two and, um, Korean War Memorial. And our, uh, uh, we're trying to create a World War Two memorial of Ralph, Robert and Fred Conroy who all served in World War Two. Fred is our father. Um, and from a process standpoint, we've gone to Mastard to understand their setback requirements, we've gone to Bill Coyle from the Auburn DPW to give us some guidance on his perspective of how to navigate this with, uh, through the town, we've gone to-
We've gone to William McLean, the Veterans Advisory Committee Chairman. We've gone to National Archives and Records Administration to get the military records of our uncles and father. Um, we're now before the Auburn Planning Board. We think this is an ideal ass, um, location across the street from the Water Street Veterans Park and where in, where our, our objective is to really, you know, make a monument, a small monument, six by 10, that would take this corner, clean it up, and have it face the Auburn Memorial. Um, our family homestead was at 510 Southbridge Street, adjacent to the family business, Conroy Brothers Construction. We also have a history in the town of, uh, building the Auburn Airport in the 30s, Chief and Lickers in the 50s, Auburn Candlepin in the, uh, 50s, and Howland Whitney in the lumberyard in the 50s and 60s. Uh, Captain Ralph Conroy was a Air Force, uh, in the Army Air Force. He flew out of England, uh, the entire war. He flew Eisenhower, MacArthur, and Truman. Corporate, uh, Corporal Robert Conroy enlisted in 1943. He was in the 38th War Dog Platoon in Italy. He was killed in 1945, and he was recognized with a Purple Heart. Our father, Fred, left school, never graduated from high school, enlisted in 1944, and was deployed in Europe in the heavy machinery and construction business. Uh, most recently, we lost our two cousins, Bobby Conroy and Bobby Whitney, who served in Vietnam. And, um, we really have a sense of urgency about completing this idea and this project as soon as possible. And again, this is property that's leftover from our family homestead and our construction business that operated for 40 years in the 30s, 40s, 50s, and, uh, ended in the 60s. All of these guys, um, died very young and, um, didn't make it out of the war, so, um, this we really want to do.
Is there anyone on the board that has any comments? I'll start with you, Nick.
I have no comments except to say that I applaud you for making the effort to doing this.
Ron Brooks?
Yes, John, I'd like to say I would be fully in favor of this. I think it's a wonderful thing. The family has been in Auburn for years. I knew almost, almost everybody. And I Sheila, I think I heard you there.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay? And it's, that little spot is kind of messy. It would be, I think it would just be an, an added positive to the town and, uh, you know, make it look, it would be really nice right down. It would be, and, uh, such a nice thing to do. Thank you, Ron. How, how, how big is that little piece?
It's about 2,000 square feet, Ron.
Yeah, 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 and the way it's at, like, an angle almost, it would be looking right down towards the other one that, uh, I'm sure it should be...
Articulate from the town memorial.
Yeah, yeah. It's, uh, I just think it would be a welcome addition to Southbridge Street. Thank you, Ron.
Steve Chambers, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I, I appreciate all the effort that you guys went through prior to coming to the board, and I think everything looks good, and I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Todd, do you have any comments?
Uh, just to say that I'm supportive and to thank your family for their service.
Okay, thank you, Regan.
I feel the same way, and to me, there aren't enough monuments honoring the men and women who've lost their lives to let us do what we do today. Are there any public comments? There being none, may I have a motion to approve? Nick Lynch?
John, it's Ronnie Brooks. I'll make a motion to approve.
John, um, John, could you open the public hearing?
Not a public hearing. It's an application. I went through with that with, had it beforehand.
They requested a waiver of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
So let's start again. May I have a mo, may I have a motion to approve? Or vote?
I, I gave, Ronnie Brooks, I gave the motion to approve, John.
Hey, could I have a second, please?
This is Nick Lynch. I second that.
Okay, all those in favor, Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye. All in favor, it is a vote. Good luck with constructing your monument. I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Good luck.
Next on the agenda is applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated request for site plan approval under section 3.2.2.1 and 5.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for two-family dwelling of property located at 28-30 Alba Street, Auburn, Mass., MAP 65, Parcel 70. They have requested a continuance to the next meeting. Do I have a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion to continue.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. And we'll determine when the next meeting is, at the end of our agenda. Next on the, uh, agenda tonight is applicant SZLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for a 13-lot, single-family home development of property located at 178 Hampton Street in 19E Nav, Map 12, Parcel 120. There is a request for a continuance for this also. May I have a motion to continue?
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Ronnie Brooks, I'll second it.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, aye, it is a vote. Moving on to other business, I think Adam would have something to say about the appointment of the CMRPC delegates.
Yes, uh, thank you, John. Um, this is our annual time to, for the planning board to appoint their two delegates of CMRPC. Um, the town has three delegates and one alternate delegate to CMRPC. Um, it's important to participate in their events, um, as long as somebody attends some of their regular meet, uh, uh, event, or it's a quarterly meeting or other meetings, the town gets, um, hours of earned time that we can use on various projects or mapping, um, up to 20 hours a year. It's very beneficial, um, for the town, especially, um, with the mapping. We don't really have anybody in town that does mapping, and CMRPC does a lot. So the current or previous CMRPC delegates from the planning are Stephen Chambers and Scott Redden. Um, I already checked with Scott. He, um, doesn't have the time to serve as a delegate, um, so, Steve, if you want to keep going and somebody else would like to volunteer, that would be great. The other alternates...
I'll continue.
Okay. Yes, Steve, you'll, you'll continue.
Yes.
Is there anyone else who would like to volunteer?
There, there's not another member I'll volunteer. This is Todd Corain.
Thank you, Todd.
Do you want to take a quick vote to, not, to appoint them as delegates?
Could I have a motion to appoint both Todd and Steve as delegates to the CMRPC?
This is Nick. I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
It's Ronnie. I'll make the second.
Okay, roll call vote. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is a vote. Thank you, gentlemen, for volunteering. Moving on to decisions, I don't think we have any.
Nope.
And then we have the minute, meeting, meeting minutes for 9/22/2020. I made one small correction in spelling. Unless anybody else found anything else, I'd like that motion to approve as amended.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Steve Chambers, I'll second.
All those in favor, Todd Corain?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye, it is a vote. Uh, there's no new business unforeseen by the chair that I'm aware of, and member town planner update?
No, I don't have any.
So the next thing we have to decide is when the next, uh, planning board meeting will be. Unfortunately, in two weeks, our planning board meeting falls on the same night as the town meeting, so we have to either just have one planning board meeting this month and move it to, uh, November 10th, which is what I'm in favor of, but that's up to you guys, or we do it in, on a Wednesday or a Thursday. Can't do it on a Monday because that's a selective meeting. So it'd have to be, and we can't even do it on a Thursday, can we? We can't even do it on a Wednesday because that's, um, uh, conservation, isn't it?
John?
Yes?
What was your date?
November 10th.
That's not election day, is it?
No, November 3rd is Ron. They already have the votes counted by November 10th.
November 10th will sound good to me.
Okay, could I have a motion? Could I have a motion to, um, approve the next, uh, planning board meeting to be moved to 11/10/2020?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll second the mo, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, Nick Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Todd Corain?
Aye.
Myself is an aye, it is a vote. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, could I have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? All those in favor, Todd Corain?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Absolutely.
Myself, John Regan, is an aye, it is a vote, and thank all of you for hanging in there through our long delay tonight. I really appreciate it. Have a great rest of the week.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Enjoy it. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.